Check 1, 2, 3, 4. Check 1, 2, 3, 4. 1, 2, 3. Hi. Check 1, 2, 3, 4.
Being here, I'm just gonna make very briefly for the Spanish translation. Si hay personas que necesitan audífonos, tenemos audífonos para personas que necesiten traducción en español. No? Alright, thank you. Okay, so with that, are we ready to come back?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the City Council met to discuss pending litigation. There are three items there. The first of the three, Eddie Mendoza and Brian Padilla versus City of Southgate. This is a collision with a sewer meter that popped up and allegedly damaged a car and caused injuries. The suit was discussed in closed session following the presentation by the City Attorney's Office and a motion made by Councilmember Hurtado and seconded by Vice Mayor Barone. And on a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized the City Attorney to defend that matter. Item one B and one C there are related. These are claims, not yet lawsuits filed by Teresa Ramirez and Hector Ramirez against the City of Southgate involving a collision, a rear-end collision with a city-driven vehicle. After a presentation by the City Attorney and by staff and on a motion made by Councilmember Avalos and seconded by Mayor Daviline on a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized the rejection of both of those claims. Item number two, the evaluation and performance of a public employee. There's a brief presentation by the City Manager and upon completion of that presentation, there was no reportable action taken. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you, City Attorney. So at this time, I'm gonna open it to the audience. Does any audience have any comments on closed session? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. We are adjourned for a special meeting. So at our next meeting, it's our regular City Council meeting. And we will start with Rob Combs, please.
Mayor Davila?
Present.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz is excused. City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
Okay, before we go into that, we'll do the invocation. Pastor Bobby Scott is here with us today. Thank you so much for being here with us. And the pledge of allegiance, it will be done by, I wanna ask Sophie Ryan to do it for us today. Thank you.
There we go. "I bring greetings to Community of Faith Bible Church and on behalf of my wife as well too, and I do apologize for missing our last meeting. Will you bow to me as we pray? Father who dwells in heaven, holy is your name. I along with this council and the citizens of Southgate come before you tonight with heavy hearts. As parts of Los Angeles County, we pray for our neighbors in Pasadena and Altadena and Pacific Palisades and aim just a few who are being decimated by these fires. Father, you've made us to feel the pains of others and I pray you'd help us to empathize, that you'd help us to help our neighbors and bless us to be a blessing to them. Father, we are powerless before these raging winds and these unrelenting fires are overwhelming. We can't stop them without your intervention. So I pray, God, that you would help grant wisdom to our governor and our city's mayors, give strength to our first responders and show compassion to our new homeless victims. And please, I pray, that you would visit and comfort those who've lost loved ones. Oh God, show them that you care and help us to mourn with those who mourn. And as you promised, God, hear the prayers of the brokenhearted and our hearts are collectively broken. So as we mourn, Lord, we mourn, God, that you unite us together, that we would strive together to get through this. And Father, we know that these fires will end, these winds will stop, this tragedy will be over at some point. And I pray that what will be said of Southgate, it'll just be said that we loved our neighbors well. I thank you for how you've used our first responders to protect our city and how you've spared us. We thank you for them. Thank you for our excellent leadership, Lord, and how you've used them to bless our cities, our city. And Father, we have a vision for our city and I pray, God, as we enter into this new year, that you'd grant us the fullness of, to experience it. I pray that we would be a thriving, safe city, inclusive community where everyone will have the opportunity to access the services and education and support to be resilient, to live full and vibrant lives. God, hear our prayer, grant us mercy and help. In Christ's name I pray, amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you, please stand, put your hand on your heart, ready, begin. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you. At this time, can you read the compensation?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by City Council members is $1,900 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, we're going to public hearings. We have no public hearings at this time. But before we go to comments from the audience, non-agenda items, I wanna take this time to, and we all, we all been impacted with the fires that have occurred. Their lives lost, property lost. And you know, our hearts and our prayers are with all those who have been impacted. One of our own, Denise Diaz, a former councilwoman in Southgate, lost her home. So you know, our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. And you know, we just need to, you know, keep praying for those, to give them peace. And it's just to see the amount of support, donations that have come across and it's just amazing how well, you know, our people here in the city of Los Angeles, county of Los Angeles have come together and give. But I'm sure it's not just the county of Los Angeles, but it's the entire United States. They are with all our people here in the county. And I just wanna, you know, take this time to reflect on that, that they are not alone. We're here, you know, to assist and help of whatever which way that we can. And I think that right now, our best way to help them is with our prayers. And of course, you know, if we can help them with some financial fundings, 'cause that's what they are going to be needing in the next couple of weeks and months or even days. Later on, we will put down in, on the slide, the organizations that they can donate to, like the American Cross, the Salvation Army, LA Food Bank and the LA Fire Department Foundation and the Pasadena Humane. Of course, we can't not go without thinking also about our animals. It's just devastating to see so many dogs, cats, I think even saw a bull, or horses. I mean, they're just, that we need to take care of our animals also. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open for public comments on non-agenda items.
Mayor, could I just dovetail, as people are coming up, real quick? We have the slide behind you now and this is on our website. If anyone, these are QR codes where you can scan right on the screen and connect to these different agencies or you could just look them up. But these are groups that when we've reached out, they all have programs to help those in need and we could dial straight in as residents and help wherever the need is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's with a heavy heart to be here under these circumstances and I thank you for your leadership and your words. Today I'm here before you because I want to ask you for three things. I want to ask you-
Can we have your name?
Oh yes, Ophelia Sophie Ryan. Yes? Thank you, I'm sorry about that. I want to ask for your support for our immigrant students. I want to ask for three things. Senator Lena Gonzalez is passing a bill, Senate Bill 48, which would prevent ICE and other federal agencies from going into schools and from getting information about our students and families. And it also tries to establish a perimeter to keep them as far as possible from the schools. So by doing so, it's gonna protect our immigrant families from ICE attacks and deportations 'cause I want to bring it to your memory that last time when Trump was in power, a lot of people that were even citizens were deported just because they were brown. So we want to prevent these attacks, so I'm asking you to pass a resolution to support Senate Bill 48. And also, the Southgate cities have a lot of immigrants and LAUSD doesn't have services to support immigrants. So I want to talk to you about asking LAUSD to create an immigrant students support unit where we could have child welfare and attendance counselors per region supporting students who are having issues whose immigration status make them targets of these situations to help them. I want to bring you, remind you that our governor is putting together an immigrant hub. So we're gonna need a liaison between this immigrant hub and supports and our parents and students. So it's really important to do that. I'm gonna go ahead and email you a resolution as a draft to share my ideas. And this is a great opportunity to start working together to support our families. And I thank you for helping the community under these difficult circumstances and have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good evening. My name is Homer Lopez. I just have a couple of things that I wanna bring up to the council to see what can be done to address some of these situations in the neighborhood. The parking lot, I've addressed this before with the council, is the parking lot located on Southern and Calden that are being used by the campus. I don't know if it's still the satellite campus of East LA. But that parking lot, I know they've used chains to lock it before the chains have been removed. The parking lot gets used as a dumb zone by homeless people. It's constantly full of trash. I myself take it upon myself to pick up the trash in the neighborhood as much as I can, but I'm just one person. So I know that, I don't know if the city is responsible to ask them to continue to clean that parking lot on a weekly basis. If so, that'll be great. Finding a solution to lock it overnight would be another thing that would be fantastic. I know that we have cars that go in there and do donuts in the middle of the night. Sometimes it's 2:00 AM, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I brought that up before, not sure what can be done about that. We can call the Sheriff Department, but by the time they get there, they're gone. So another thing, another idea possibly is perhaps adding some surveillance or something that may look like surveillance so that it deters people from using that parking lot overnight. Another thing is, what can be done to resurface the streets from Santa Fe, from Firestone to Tweedy and then Southern from Long Beach down to Alameda? I feel like there's been a lot of resurfacing of the streets that took place in that area, but those main roads haven't been taken care of. So I don't know if the city has any plans for that. Also, is there a way to bring back the Zoom call-in option along with the calling in option? There are people like myself sometimes that have to work in the evenings, can't be present and we have to take time out of work to come into the City Council and address situations. Aside from, I know there's an email that can be sent to the city clerk, but I know that there are other people who would appreciate having the call-in option or Zoom to make their voices heard in the community. So if we could possibly bring that back, that'll be greatly appreciated. Let's see, I have a list to make sure, to show everything here. I know that the city's done a lot to resurface Long Beach Boulevard and they tried to beautify it and we're using city funds for that. But is there an irrigation system for that? Because those trees are all dead. So if we're trying to beautify the community, I don't think having dead trees is gonna help with that. So those are my comments and my concerns and I hope you guys can address those for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my first time here and I heard that if you want change in your community, you need to start getting involved.
Can we have your name, please?
That's me, being here today. I'm a 50-year resident of Southgate, hoping to retire here with my wife. I've seen many changes in Southgate. One of the things that concerns me is public safety.
Can we have your name before?
I am so sorry, my name is Francisco Gallegos.
Thank you.
One of my, a little nervous, sorry. Public safety, I've seen a decrease in police presence. Many of my neighbors have had their catalytic converters stolen, including me, which resulted in my insurance company dropping me after I put the claim. I've had numerous cars stolen. Recently, there was a street takeover. I live unnoticed and it was horrific to wake up to hundreds of cars just taking over the street. It seemed hopeless, you know, it just seems like nothing could be done about that. It was horrific just to witness that. I've heard it in the news, but just to see it in our community, it broke my heart. It just shattered every sense of safety that I had in the city. The other thing that I've noticed is parking enforcement, I don't see it. I see vehicles blocking driveways, blocking sidewalks, which makes it impossible to walk your dog. Vehicles are blocking fire hydrants and this is on a daily basis. I don't, I walk every day, so I see this. People parking their cars in their lawns. I have somebody in my block that's using their front lawn as a car dealership on the weekends and parks 10 cars in there. I don't see anything being done about that or citations. And last but not least, I've struggled with fireworks in this community for many years and I thought, well, maybe I can overcome it. But every year, even though I support celebrating that day, but it is so scary now because nobody uses safe fireworks. Everybody uses illegal fireworks. My backyard is littered with smoldering trash from these fireworks. I have to prepare every year and seeing the things that happen now with the fires just culminated my concern about this. Just thinking about the Fourth of July coming up, just, it makes me very anxious that this could happen to our community. This is some of my concerns. I know that I took more than three minutes, but I really hope that you guys take, you know, concern about this.
That's your three minutes.
So thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for our comments. Is there anyone else for public comments, non-agenda items? Okay. We're gonna close the audience section. Do we have any emails?
We have one email from Mr. Mario Dominguez.
Go ahead, please.
He expresses concerns about LA County's preparation for large-scale fires, like the Pacific Palisades one. He asked whether the city has adequate infrastructure, water supply and pressure to support fire crews during such events and if additional fire departments like Downing could assist during that time. He also inquires about the efforts of the Directors of Public Works to ensure readiness. And additionally, he suggests a citywide campaign encouraging residents to trim overgrown trees in their backyards to prevent potential fire hazards, especially near power lines. He also emphasizes the importance of community if movement and the fire prevention in our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna go to comments from the directors. If there was a question that it was brought up to us, if you can please address those questions, please. Arturo, we can, I will, first.
Yes, I'm gonna start with a CIP update. I've got one slide for you all. If we can get that slide placed. So today I just wanted to highlight a couple of projects. The first project is the Urban Orchard Project. I'm happy to report that the construction is really ramped up, starting in early January. We're about five months from completion. There you see activities where the contractor is digging work for the, also a lot of the miscellaneous work. But I did wanna share the artwork that is just on top of that. In case you see it in the background there, it's gonna be available from the park, but we're five months out from construction. And then I also wanted to highlight the status on the Holodeo Community Park renovation project. Wanted to mention that the project is nearing substantial completion. In essence, within the next couple of weeks, we will find be finalizing all of the details of that project and it'll be ready for a ribbon cutting. And then with regards to some of the questions, commentary that you heard tonight, the first was with regard to can we resurface Santa Fe and Southern? On the west side of the city, we've invested a lot of money resurfacing streets, residential streets as well as major areas or what have you. We're now shifting the city's limited resources further to the north and then to the east and we're not funding additional residential streets in that area. But we do have a program with that that we are funding and that's available for the public. So those are not on our radar at this time. And then with regards to, do we have an irrigation system on Long Beach Boulevard? Because I think you said the trees are dead, maybe? I will take a look at that. We certainly have an irrigation- We certainly have an irrigation system, so we'll look at the planting and the trees and how they're doing. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Art, if you can, because we get asked this question a lot about resurfacing streets, and you talk about limited funding, and a lot of people have the impression that we have a lot of funding. Just so that you can enlighten the people that are listening as to what funding do you use for the streets? It's Measure R. It's basically gas tax money, but can you please, so that they understand where we get that money from, and that it's not like we have it available, we have to apply for it and all that?
Yeah, let me try to simplify, provide a very simplified and streamlined response. There are two types of monies in general, if I can categorize them in that way. One is grants, right? A lot of the street work that we're doing, where there is a lot of money, are, that, that come in from grants for our major streets like Long Beach Boulevard, Firestone Boulevard, that's tens of millions of dollars. What residents are mainly wanting to see is funding for residential streets. The funding for residential streets is very limited, probably a couple of million a year. And to give you an idea, we need over, I think the last estimate was like over $85 million just to fix some of the basic issues on our street, add sidewalk and everything else, we're probably at a couple of hundred million. So the resources are very limited, and we're doing what we can to try to identify more funding, but it's just not traditionally been available. So we did invest a lot of money on, the city did, over $10 million on the west side of the city, and we're starting to work our way east to kind of spread that through the residents throughout the city. So it is limited.
Yeah, thank you. And just to refresh my memory, because it was quite some time ago that that $85 million was calculated, that was when Mohammed was still here, and it was calculated at $85 million. But that $85 million, our, our streets were graded, you know, like in school, an A is superior and so on, B, C, and D. Our streets were graded as a D, which is kind of sort of the same thing nationwide. The streets, infrastructure through the entire country is pretty dismal. And that $85 million was just to get us from a D to a C, was the way he explained it. So again, we all live here in Southgate, and we have the same issues. We wish we could have the resources available to address every street in the city. We, you know, our cars take a beating, but I just want to make sure that, that $85 million that you're talking about was put into perspective. That was about 12, 13, 14 years ago.
Yes, and we have, it, it was, but I do also want to clarify that the city has invested some funding, so while we fix some streets, other streets have deteriorated, so you carve away at that, and then up go the, the needs for repair.
Right.
So, yeah, it still continues to be an issue for us in terms of funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
If I may?
Okay. So when you were doing the resurfacing, Arturo, I brought up the issue specifically of Southern, because now you are no longer able to go through certain streets. You, all of the traffic is now rerouted to Southern Avenue. So I know specifically the area, Mr. Logan, that you're speaking about, because I live off of Glenwood. There's a lot of potholes on Southern in between Long Beach and Alameda, pretty bad. And that was one of the streets that I had asked you if we could please look into it, because we resurfaced a lot of the streets going east and west. However, Truba, you drive smooth, then it gets really bad, and then it's smooth. So to me, it's like, let's start taking care of those highways that we are using more because of the medians that we put in, that now we are rerouting traffic to those specific streets that normally did not get the high-level traffic before, and now they are.
Completely understood. I do just want to mention, it's a very practical issue for the city just in terms of funding. So for potholes and maintenance issues like that, we can get staff out there immediately to address that. So I'll follow up with staff. In terms of wanting to do additional streets there, the council is welcome to revisit its capital improvement program and, you know, re-prioritize streets as, as it wishes, but currently, our current capital program has a shifting, some of those limited resources. Starting to work our way east, because those other streets are, are just as bad, and so, right. I understood that.
No, and I understand that, but, you know, we redesigned Long Beach Boulevard.
Understood.
I don't know that the forethought was there of how traffic is now going to be impacting specifically Southern.
Yeah.
It's much more traffic now than it was before.
Yeah, I understood. The forethought was there in terms of planning. We do have the capital planning for major streets and for minor streets. What we don't have is the money. We have plenty of planning documents, so we just don't have the money to do everything that we would want to do despite need, despite the forethought, despite as much planning. It's, you know, hundreds of millions to address all of the city's infrastructure, but, with that being said, we will certainly look at that area to address any maintenance issues that we can within our current budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's continue with the reports. I remember this is a non-agenda item, so, yeah. Okay. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of quick things. Our Tierra and Ties event, which is our father and daughter event, is sold out.
Wow.
Sold it all out. It's gonna be a great event. They've got a bunch of different things happening for it, so that will be taking place here soon. I actually forgot what the date was, but it's on our flyer up here, so that's happening. And then last Saturday, we were happy to put on our annual open house at the sports center. Staff estimated 300 to 400 people showed up for it. We had vendors out there. We had fitness people teaching seminars on different fitness things to do. We had people checking body weights and fats and stuff like that and giving personal training notes for people. A lot of good things happened. They also got to do some halftime at some of the Southgate A basketball games, and it seems they've acquired a new t-shirt cannon. And so during halftime, they were able to shoot off a few t-shirts to people, which was, went over really well. So the new year has started, and they've started some other things going. Those two, along with our annual Biggest Loser challenge, which started this week. A lot of good things happening at the park still.
Nice. And that event you're talking about, the father-daughter, it's on the 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Okay.
Mayor, may I address the issue that Mr. Homer Lopez mentioned regarding the college?
Oh, okay. Why don't you address it when you, you give your report? Okay. And let's continue with the director's report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just want to report that the Department of Administrative Services is working on mid-year and carryover, so in February, we will be coming to council with review and approval of our mid-year budget.
Thank you. Nellie? Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Good evening. I'd like to announce our recruitment that we have going on. We have a lot, so I'll try to go faster than. We have associate engineer, civilian custody officer, clerical assistant, engineer aide, which is an hourly position, journey electrician, lifeguard, maintenance helper in the water department or water division, hourly, police dispatcher, police officer. We also have police officer lateral, police recruit, and public works senior management analyst in the engineer division, along with the recreation leader, two grounds, water service representative, one and two. And I'm happy to report that we will be conducting the director of community development recruitment in-house, and we'll start off that this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our chief?
Mayor, council, I'll address a couple of the public safety issues that were brought up. We're working on our year-end stats for 2024, but I will say that in 2024, we've issued thousands of parking citations, thousands. So there's no lack of effort, it's just that we have people that just don't, don't pay attention. We've outgrown our city, so parking is at a premium. In fact, today, we just put out on our social media site that shortly, we're gonna start enforcing the new law regarding the parking on the, on the curbs, on the corners. It's all public safety. So it's, we're out there doing the best we can with, with parking enforcement. As far as catalytic converters, it's, it's not just a novel issue here, it's county-wide. Literally, it takes less than a minute to steal a catalytic converter. We've asked residents to secure their vehicles by parking it in their parking, or in their garages, or behind gates on their property as best they can. Again, those are thefts that occur less than a minute. Depending on the height of the vehicle, you can get under there relatively easy with the saws and chop off the catalytic converter. So we do ask residents to help secure their own vehicles at night, activate their alarms if they have them, that helps. Street takeovers, that's another issue where, at any given time, street takeovers happen relatively quickly. It's like a two- or three-minute intersection takeover with a bunch of vehicles, and by the time we get out there, everyone goes in different directions. So we have patrols out there, and we have the ability to, to contact CHP and create a task force when we know that those takeovers are coming to our city. Sometimes they telegraph that to, through social media sites, that a takeover will happen. We're very fortunate, because the big intersections at bigger cities seem to take the brunt of the, the takeovers. And finally, with regards to fireworks, that's been an issue since I started here 30 years ago, and it's really hard for us to, to go out there and enforce. We do have ordinance that, we've issued citations in the past where it starts at $1,000, so it's a very expensive citation. We'll cross that bridge when we get there for Fourth of July. And then finally, I just wanted to advise the council that our police officers have been contributing to the fires through the mutual aid requests of the county. The southeast cities have been sending teams of police officers to the Eden Canyon fires, and last week, we sent some officers to Santa Monica. They were having a rash of burglaries and looters, so we assisted Santa Monica. We've seemed to taper off a little bit. Area E seems to have a lot under control now with the National Guard in, so we're gonna play it by ear, but Southgate's been a very big part of that mutual aid response in helping get the county back in line.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. City manager?
No report tonight.
City attorney?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
City clerk?
Mayor, I have nothing for my department. However, I would like to express my deepest thoughts and prayers to all the fire victims, everyone suffering out in those areas. Thank you.
Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a meeting with Vector Control last week, and they reported that so far to date, we've had about 12 cases of dengue, two of which were due to travel. So again, if you have any standing water, please dump it out. Mosquitoes are harmless little creatures that could make us really, really sick. Again, prayers to all of the families that have been affected by the fires, whether they lost their home, or you know someone, or just the fact that you're doing what you possibly can to assist the communities that have been affected. We need to stick together in this time of crisis for California, because we all know someone who knows someone who was affected. So definitely, my heart goes out to them. We've had to assist several family members evacuate because of these fires, and I'm really sorry to hear about our former colleague losing her, her home, recently married. So I wish the whole family well, as well as anybody who is going through this. And again, reach out to a therapist, to a counselor, because we all need to make sure that our mental health is taken care of, especially in the time of crisis that California's going through. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rios, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to address the issue that came up, Mr. Lopez brought up the issue of the, the parking lot over there by the college where, where we have parking. We have a lease agreement with the Department of Water and Power, Metropolitan Water District to maintain that parking lot, and, and it serves the, you know, we do use it, even though we're not at that location, we have shuttle. And we've, in the past, we put a safety chain to secure the parking lot. That didn't work because they cut the chains. We purchased some automatic gates, so it'll, we're gonna install those sometime this month. So hopefully, that will secure it more. We'll look at surveillance, it's a great idea, see what we could do, because we do have lights there. The, the problem is when we don't have security, but, but we have security throughout the week except the weekends, and that's where it becomes an issue. So we're, we're gonna... Yeah, he knows who I am. Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanted him to clarify that he's the dean of East LA College, so when he says "we," that's who the "we" is.
Yeah, so we're, we're working on it, Homer, and he's, he's an advocate of the community there. So thank you, and we'll continue to update you on it.
Thank you.
Oh, and my report is basically, really, just, again, what I echo with my colleagues regarding the, all those that have lost property and some of them that have lost their lives here in the county, and, you know, it's sad, you know, it's, I don't know how they're gonna replace that. It's gonna take a long time to build those communities, I mean, years in the making. I know that we're hearing from FEMA, $44,000, that's the maximum grant that people can apply for. That's not a lot, it's not gonna go very far, and we know about the insurance companies pulling out of the state and all that, so we, we, we don't know everything yet, and all the loss, so we're saddened by that, and it's, it's good that the community has come together and, and so forth. So, you know, hopefully, the winds help us out here in the coming days and, and, and some of this fire goes away. But I just want to also wish everybody, this coming weekend is gonna be MLK Day, so have a good MLK Day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurtado?
Yeah. Emergencies, as everybody has seen, can bring out the best in people, a lot of people are contributing, but it also brings out the worst in people. And that's, you know, I asked the city clerk to put this information back up, because this is where you probably want to donate. There's a lot of scammers out there, and sadly, there's looting taking place, and it's very unfortunate that, that those things happen. Another thing that is part of, you know, the fire, is what we're breathing in, and the air quality is horrible. And I say that because I can tell you personally, I have a lot of issues with allergies and other respiratory things. I'm not gonna lie to you, I have N95 masks, and when I'm out, you know, out and about, I'll put it on, and I highly recommend it. I get it, a lot of people don't like to wear masks, they don't like to be told to wear a mask, but it's for your own safety. You don't want to put that, that gunk into your lungs. We heard a request for some support. There's actually two ballot measures that are out there, or two assembly bills, Assembly Bill 49 and, and Senate Bill 48, and that is asking that undocumented students are protected by, you know, not allowing, you know, immigration people going into the schools. I've been reached out to by quite a few people. I'm sure I'm not alone. I'm sure my colleagues have gotten the same calls in regards to trying to get resources, resources meaning information on how to protect our community. And there's a lot of information that goes out, especially on social media. Maybe some of it is factual, maybe some of it is made up. I read some concerns that people were saying that they were out in neighboring city, ICE was out there. I don't know if that was true or not. We haven't seen it here in Southgate, but somebody did tell me that they were out on Southern, and I forget what other street this is, but I, that wasn't confirmed. But again, it's bringing that fear to people in our community. Councilwoman Avalos mentioned about mental health, and this is something that is scaring a lot of people in our community. So what I'm, I did is I asked the city manager to reach out to Congresswoman Nanette Barrigan, who represents our community, to see if they can bring in some information to our residents on how to deal with those concerns that are out and about. And again, it's very unfortunate. Again, it's not about the, the politics, but the incoming administration is making some promises that they're gonna deport a whole bunch of people, and it is frightening to a lot of people. They're gonna be afraid to go to work, they're gonna be afraid to go to school, and nobody should have to live with that on, on a daily basis. And so I'm hoping that we can get those resources. Again, I'm very glad to know that Lena Gonzalez, our state... Lena Gonzalez, our state senator, our representative, is on top of it. And I can assure you, my friendship with Jose Solace, who's our new representative at the state level at the Assembly, he's also very concerned about this. So hopefully we can bring some information soon, Rob, to alleviate some of the concerns, not only in a, in a public setting, but also just online where they can get the resources and the proper information.
Before you continue, I believe there is a couple of meetings that LUSD is putting together. I don't have that information, but I can get that information to, to Rob so we can all have their workshops. And they're for parents. So I'll get that information as soon as, as soon as I.
Yeah. It's very unfortunate that we have to address that. We're here to address local concerns like streets, lights, water, all that other stuff. Safety. That having to address the concerns of our community, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening. You know, I think for, you know, the year 2025, I think politics should never scare people to that, to that degree. Let's see, what else? And yeah, you mentioned about the, the crosswalk thing. I think there's also, what is the intent of that, right? The law, the new law says that nobody can park within a pedestrian crosswalk within 20 feet. And that's going to be very difficult on our community. As it is, there's a lot of parking shortages. And the way I see it, if you look at every corner, there are people not just parking within 20 feet. They're parking on the actual corner. And so if you start removing those cars, you're looking almost at three at each corner. So you got the four corners. That's, that's 12. That's on one block, right? Multiply that times all the blocks that we have here. It's going to create a lot of problems. But remember, these are not City of Southgate policies. These are state and our police department is required to follow state law. And, you know, I know in some cities, they've actually put like lines for people to park. And in some cities, they've actually put it all the way to the corner. Now they're going to have to go back and remove them. Because if I'm a resident in that community and I see that there's a space there and you park there and you wake up to a ticket, you go, wait a minute, I parked within the lines there. Yeah, but the law changed and somebody's going to be uninformed. So again, these are, these are issues that, that happen. And now we have to deal with them. And let me see, I think that's it. So yeah, I'll.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, Byron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to respond to also to Mr. Lopez's comments regarding the area there at Calden. I, I live right around the corner from it. I'm there passing that intersection probably on a daily basis. And I always like to promote our, our city app, Go Southgate app. It's a great way to take photos of the location. It automatically sends that information to the departments that are, should receive it. And then they will notify the people who are responsible for cleaning the area. I do the same with pot hoses, lights being out, you know, bulky items being, you know, illegally dumped in areas. So definitely, you know, that's an area that's very highly hit. We're in an area that's really close to the train tracks. We're in the area that's, that, you know, it's an open, easy access area. It's not just the Calden parking lot there, but also the driveway for the public storage location gets hit all the time with illegal dumping because it's just an open area right next to Alameda. A large truck can pull in, dump the things out. And I've actually witnessed how, you know, how they do it so quickly. They put this tarp on the back of their truck. They kind of pull it out a little bit and then they just take off so fast that everything just kind of slides off the truck and then they're gone. It's less than a minute, you know, and they're, and they're making our city look, look bad. And I guarantee you, the majority of this is happening from residents or for people that don't live in our community. And, and we definitely are being impacted by it. Now, I will say, there are some instances where our residents are just not informed of what resources we have. We have a bulky item pickup through UWS that we are allowed to call in once a month. We have, we can call them up, set up a date for them to pick up bulky items, trash. And we get one a month, up to 10 items. So I, I urge residents to get informed of that, to make those calls. And it used to be, when we had Waste Management, that it was only for the property owner. But now the renters at apartment buildings can call in for bulky item pickup. And I think that's a lot of misinformation or disinformation that's, that's out there that they can't call in. They're allowed to call in UWS, schedule for bulky item pickup, provide them their address, and then they get the same service for that. So hopefully, that information is being relayed by the property owners or landlords to the, to the tenants because that's also, I think, one of the reasons why we get sometimes this happening. But, but thank you again for your comment. Thank you for being here and your advocacy for our community. Want to go ahead and also touch, since we're talking about bulky items in UWS, I do want to mention that they do have a scholarship program happening right now for our students here in Southgate. If you're a high school student, thank you. UWS is doing a scholarship. They're giving out five $2,000 scholarships. So I urge if you have a student or if a student's listening or if you're a parent of a, of a student who is a high school student here in Southgate, please have them apply. For more details, please go to UWS Instagram page for the details on the, no, the deadline is January 31st. There is an essay and the subject for the essay is environmental sustainability and me. So definitely something to look into.
And for more information, we have it on our city website.
We also have it on our city website. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This last Saturday, I also serve as the president for the Saleh Kiwanis. And this last Saturday, we had our day of service. We partnered up with the LA County Federation of Labor to box, to box food, non-perishable food that was, took place at the Salvation Army in Bell, that location where the, the shelter is. We had over 35 volunteers from the Southgate Kiwanis, the Saleh Kiwanis, of course. And we also had key club members from King Drew. Were able to, you know, we were there from nine to one o'clock and we were able to box or pack up 900 boxes of food, which some of that food was actually delivered to some of the victims of the fire. So it was really a well-attended day of service. Very proud of all the volunteers and the organizations that got together to do that. And it's just, you know, we're trying to do our part, right? We're trying to do our, everybody is, is anxious and trying to figure out, how can we help? I know we have these links up, the QR codes up here. But there's a lot of nonprofits, community-based organizations that are out there helping and wanted to say thank you to them as well. The Southgate Kiwanis is also doing a, a drive for bath towels and blankets. They are going to be collecting on tomorrow, January 15th, during their Loteria at the Senior Center where they go. If for more information, I would say go to Southgate Kiwanis Instagram page and you can find out where that location for the drop-off is. But again, great organization. Had an idea because they were told that the firemen and first responders and some of the evacuees were staying at local YMCA's. And the one thing they were missing were bath towels, right? They wanted to be able to take a bath. They wanted blankets to be able to sleep. And they were like, okay, there's a need. Let's address that and we're going after it. So for more information, please go visit them. Let's see. Want to also touch on the daylighting, which is the new law regarding the curbs. And I know that that's something that's been brought up to me personally by a lot of residents. Hey, it's already hard enough to park. What are we going to do? You know, how are we, you know, what's the reason for this? You know, we heard the same kind of discussions when we were redoing Fires on Boulevard. Oh, man, I have to go all the way around. I can't make a left turn on my block anymore. It's just a hassle. You know, we're hearing it on Long Beach as well. Same thing, the medians don't let me make a left turn into my street. But all these laws are happening because we're identifying that our streets are not safe for the pedestrians, the people riding the bikes, the kids walking to school. They're not safe for them because our drivers are in a rush in the morning. They're unable to see the corners. They're unable to see if people are getting, coming out to cross the street. And all these laws that happen, they don't just come out of nowhere. They come out of the idea where how can I make the street safer for the residents that live in it? And we're hopeful that this is going to be one of those solutions that help solve some issues that we have on pedestrians being hit, how many, you know, pedestrians being killed, you know, kids being hit while they ride their bikes because they're not being able to be seen. We're hoping this would help. So I know it's an inconvenience. We're losing, you know, 10 to 12 parking spots on the, on the four-corner area. But we're hoping that it's going to make the area safer. It's going to make the community safer for the people who are out there walking on a daily basis. So hopefully for that. And then last, I just want to touch on the Aztec cheerleading squad. I, I got word that they were in JAM's competition in Las Vegas. And one of the age groups ended up winning first and second place this year. They're very competitive. I think this is the fourth year in a row where they actually came back with a first or second place banner. So they're, they're very excited. They're flying high. Just want to say congratulations and wishing them the best. Thank you.
Congratulations to them. Then what we need to do as council, we need to bring them in and recognize them, make sure that they are being recognized. And if our city manager can write this down to see if we can get them in our next council meeting. If not, on the first meeting in February. Okay. Well, most of the, I mean, the announcements were already given out, which is the scholarships for UWS. This is a really important scholarship because we're talking about $2,000 for, for students. So if you are in the audience and parents who are watching in YouTube, if you have kids who are in high school, please tell them to apply for the UWS scholarship. It's $2,000. And again, the deadline is January 31st. And the information, it's on our website. So let's, let's get those scholarships, you know, give them out to our kids here in the City of Southgate. And I really don't have much, but just to, to add, we are adjourning in the memory of late President Jimmy Carter, who's, he passed away. Apparently dedicated his service to humanitarian cause, particularly through his support of humanity. Habitat for Humanity leaves a legacy that continues to inspire us. He committed to build a world where everyone has a decent place of living. It has touched countless lives, including here in California. And I'm sure that Raoul can attest to that because I know that Raoul, you were also, were part of Habitat for Humanity. So, you know, we will be adjourning in his memory. And also we will be adjourning in those who have lost their lives in the fires. So with that, we will continue with our agenda and we'll go on to Consent Calendar.
Agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 are Consent Calendar items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it to the audience. Anyone that would like to speak on any of these items? This is Consent Calendar. Consent?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and department heads. Thank you for reading the compensation of the positions that are the lifeline of the city. In reality, I believe most of the positions in the city need to be assessed. However, I understand we are limited to manpower and resources available. I do have some concerns and questions regarding on how the compensation study is executed. First, is the compensation study for executive management conducted in the same manner as the compensation study for line-laying staff? Second, can you please list the cities used for the compensation study? And lastly, is it common practice for HR to refuse a compensation study if the position is, the position's wage is more than 25% below the market median? And lastly, I'm going to pivot. I just want to just wish very well. I, I want to give my best wishes towards the Southgate Explorers, who are going to compete in Chandler this weekend. And I just forgot to mention that in open comment, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now then, I'm going to close the audience. Do we have any comments from non-agenda items?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one comment from Mr. Dominguez. Actually, he is speaking on, excuse me, Consent Calendar items 1, 2, 3, I'm sorry, 1, 2, 6, 11, and 12. He states, "Strong disappointment toward the city council members accusing them of neglecting the wishes of Southgate residents." He criticizes the council for focusing on issues that benefit city hall employees, such as compensating the city manager and leasing new vehicles for a police department while ignoring the needs of the people. He highlights the absence of key residents' requested items, like a splash pad and phone-based calling features from the agenda. Mr. Dominguez feels that the council is indifferent to public's concerns and urges them to show more care for the residents they represent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We don't have any more? Okay. Okay, so City Manager, do you want to answer any of the questions that we had?
From the public comment, I believe the easiest way would be just to have HR connect offline for those items because it gets kind of technical. But for instance, just for general information, the city has a number of surrounding cities and that list has been vetted through negotiations in times past with the unions. So it's a fixed group of cities. It remains the same cities. And so if we are doing an analysis of salaries, that's the group we use as an example. So we don't cherry pick certain high-paying or low-paying groups. And it's, so that's the ones used. But we can get that list to you through the HR department and any other of the sort of decision-making that gets done in these wage reviews. We can pass that on offline.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So on item number three, the resolution initiating the annual proceedings for the levy of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 in regards to the street lighting and landscaping maintenance. Can you just, at some point, maybe not tonight, give us information as to when the last time that fee was changed? Because it's going to have a negative impact on our budgets since we're going to have to, at some point, fund using general fund money because we're not collecting the amount that's necessary. So at some point, I'd like to see, well, we could look at the historical data. I think the last time it was updated was in the 1990s. I don't know exactly when. And at some point, we became upside down. And for many years, we've been upside down. And we have to cover the expenses or the shortfall using general fund, which can be used for a lot of other things. So again, I'd like to see that. On item number five, the work on the improvements. I know that we've had some work done on some of our buildings and there's, there've been some leaks. So can we take a look to see when the last time we had some work done on that particular facility? And if there's a warranty and, you know, rather than just continuing to pay for things? And I know we've had that, we had that issue at some point with these. And I know we've had that, we had that issue at some point with the sports center. I mentioned that to you before, uh, that the sports center was redone and less than a year or two later, I think it was, it was leaking again. And, uh, you know, I don't know if we used the warranty for that. But again, we can take a look at that.
I, I can answer you the question. So the building, I believe you're speaking about is, uh, we are doing a design to look at re-roofing the auditorium at the park, as well as the city hall complex. Both have, uh, leaking problems due to when it rained. And, um, the auditorium, the last time, as we understand it, was roof, re-roofed was 1992. I think that's the right date, which puts us at year 43. Um, so we don't have a warranty there anymore. Uh, it's obviously way past when you want to re-roof. So we don't have that ability to access a warranty for that. Um, you had asked an earlier question, if, if I may. I do have some information on the assessment district.
Sure.
If that's helpful. Um, yeah, the assistant district's been in place for many, many years. Um, as far as our records, it looks like the main decline, where the rate that has not changed for all these years as costs have escalated, is, uh, 2017, when we started having negative balance, and it's grown every year. Um, we don't have any way to easily adjust that assessment without going back to the public and asking for a new rate to be charged, which would try to bring it up to actual costs. Uh, we're projecting in the year coming to be over 1.4 million in a deficit for the year.
Thanks.
Um, which ends up having to come out of general fund, which is things that we would fund regular salaries or costs for keeping the, uh, city operating. So we have to short regular operations to cover. The assessment district, which is to be used to help fund our tree trimming, street lighting maintenance, and our, uh, median, uh, care. And so it is definitely a difficulty, and that's, uh, some of the historical information to help if that answers your questions.
Yes, thank you. Uh, also, uh, on item number nine, uh, when we put, um, RFPs out, and we typically go with the lowest bidder. Um, in terms of how many hours we actually use, so that people in the audience know what's we're talking about, it's the, uh, agreement with Go-Zero, Go-To-Zero strategies, uh, for professional services for solid waste, uh, management services. I don't know how many hours we typically use, uh, but if you look at the, the rankings, Go-To-Zero is the lowest in terms of, um, average hourly rate. And they're at $108.30. Um, and then you have the one that's in third has $128.22, so roughly about $20 per hour. But in terms of, um, the three-year contract, we're looking, uh, 282, 330, or Go-To-Zero. City Green is at 239, 250. The biggest difference are the service hours, right? So again, uh, with Go-To-Zero, we have 869 hours versus City Green is only 622. But do we need that many hours? Or, I, I think you can answer the question at this point.
Yeah, you know, Mayor, members of the city council. So this particular proposal was reviewed by a committee that evaluated the needs of our program and the needs that each, or the number of hours that each, uh, service provider was offering. In terms of how we selected, we really selected on qualifications. Uh, Go-To-Zero has clearly had a superb understanding of the needs, and we thought they could meet and exceed expectations. Uh, City Green, we weren't certain they would be able to meet expectations. Now, the numbers are, if this is a not-to-exceed contract, the numbers are budgetary in nature. We can artificially reduce the number of hours for, uh, Go-To-Zero, for example, from 869 to 622 to produce a lower amount. But we would like to keep that budgetary amount to ensure that the needs, the service needs that arise or the contract period are met. The number of hours that we meet, need are uncertain at this point, but we're only going to pay for the number of hours that we actually use. So even if it's higher, actual cost would be actual cost of need. Whereas on one end, you built in the budget. On the end of City Green, if we need more than 622 hours, then we'll be back here asking for a change order, in other words. So it's budgetary in nature, and the exact number of hours are, you know, to be determined. But we feel comfortable with this fee proposal.
Thank you, uh, Art, for that explanation. Because I did have this conversation with the city manager, and when these agenda items are put out and people in the community read them, uh, they have an, an impression or an understanding or an expectation that we're going to go with the lowest bidder. But I wanted to make sure that we're able to express that there's more to it in this particular case, right? That I had to do more with qualifications and the opportunity to be able to get more hours out of that. Uh, so even though the three-year, um, contract might be cheaper with the one, uh, in the long term, it's better that we go with someone who has the ability to perform the duties that we're expecting or are hoping to get, as well as a fair per-hour deal.
Yeah, it gives you the best value, right? You get the highest ranked consultant, meaning you're getting the most experienced consultant at the lowest cost with the set budget amount that you will use only based on need. We're not going to spend any more than what we actually need. So you, if, if we end up spending the same amount of hours, say 622, we're actually going to pay less. And it'll turn out to be a better decision, cost-wise even from that perspective. In my opinion.
Madam Mayor, just to piggyback on what, um, Councilmember Hurtado mentioned, how many hours did the previous consulting firm give us?
So the previous, the contract under the previous consult- Yeah, the, the contract under their previous consultant is not a comparison of apples to apples because their prior consultant walked us to preparing the RFP, the whole, it's just many, many, many more hours. The prior consultant is listed on here, which are ranked at number two.
Yes.
They're offering their services at 562 hours. But if you look at their hourly rate, that's, that's really high, right? So if I had to answer that question, I'd say they're offering their, uh, services for estimating the needs at 562.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion.
His mic was off, but he made a motion to 1212.
And a second, uh, motion by El Rios and second by Hurtado. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
I am going to vote yes on items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and recusing myself from item number seven, given the fact that the change of those meters are going to be occurring exactly on the block where I reside. Though I am not the owner of the property, it is my mother's property. I have just started an abundance of caution. I am recusing myself.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes, on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. I will also be recusing myself for item number seven because, uh, C3 is located in the premises, in the area where my property is.
Thank you. Mayor Davila?
Yes. Motion passes.
Yes.
All right. And let's move on to the next item, which is item number 13.
The city council will consider A, appointing representatives to various outside boards and agencies of which the city of Southgate is a member, and B, ratifying the appointment of a city council auditor by the mayor as stipulated under Southgate Municipal Code Section 1.04.170, auditor appointed during the December 10th, 2024 meeting.
Okay. Uh, as I see, um-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just to make a notation, um, I know some of these agencies, for example, Eco Rapid Transit is no longer in existence. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we can take that one out?
Yes, actually, that, uh, it's part of the Gateway, um, Gateway Cities Council of Governments.
So they've consolidated then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a committee for Gateway Cities.
Mayor, the other one that's not, um, available really is the Southeast Community Development Corporation. Because in talking to the executive director, they have to make the decision, board whether to allow someone from the council. So I guess they had an exception for Denise Diaz, but-
Which one is this?
That's the Southeast Community Development Corporation. Yeah, there's no, uh, they don't invite us to the meetings unless, you know, we're, we're voted by the board, and, and that's not something they've done in the last year.
So I'll take that one out as well. So, um, because I don't think that we approved this committee. Uh, Raoul, did we? Because, um, the Southeast Community Development Corporation?
I'm not, I don't-
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that one.
I'm not remembering that one.
Can we check on that one? If it's, uh, if it, um, if we're not participating, we can just take it, take it off?
Yeah, so the city manager is reminding me that the SEDC is one that, uh, decides which members to appoint to their board. So we're not, uh, we can remove that from the list because that's on something that we appoint ourselves. They decide who they'd like to invite.
Oh, okay. Okay, then they would just take it off. Okay. So with that, we'll, um, we did the, we did the, uh, the auditor, which is our Vice Mayor, uh, County Sanitation, with the, um, last, um, last meeting. I was asked by my colleague, Vice Mayor Barron, if he can be the alternate. Um, I know that we, uh, appointed Avalos last time, uh, but I'm going to go ahead and make that change. And Gateway Cities Council Governments will leave it as is. Uh, Greater Back to Control is a two-year term. Hub Cities will leave it at S. Independent City Association, uh, we have, um, Barron and Rios. How often do you guys meet? Do you guys meet every month?
It's, it's every month. It's the second Thursday. Um, it's very easy when softball's not in session.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very hard for me when softball is in session.
Okay.
Because I'm usually coaching. But, um, I do know, um, you know, that, that we have, um, uh, active council members that are, you know, they go to the, to, to the, um, the, the meetings and that are at the conferences. So if any other council member would be interested in, in being the representative for the council, that'd be great.
Councilman Rios? I know you, you were interested in, uh-
Yeah. Okay, it's Thursdays. Yeah.
It's the second Thursday, and, uh, we can do the, uh, the change. We can have you as an alternate?
Yeah, I can be, I can be an alternate. I think, I think that'd be fair.
Okay. Independent Cities Finance Authority, we have, um, Hurtado, Davila. Um, Councilman Hurtado, you still, uh, attend those meetings?
Yeah. I'll include you with the president.
Oh. Okay, then we'll just leave it as is.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, that, that was by default because, uh, our previous president is now our Assembly Representative.
Independent Cities Risk Management, we have, I'm the representative, but, uh, normally, uh, John Hamilton is the one that goes to this meeting. So we'll just keep it at that. Uh, League of California Cities, they don't meet that often?
I didn't meet all year. I didn't ever call the meeting, so I wasn't there, but-
Can we check on that to see when they meet? Because I know they meet in various, uh, areas. As needed? Really? Well, we'll keep you there just in case they need you. Okay, Southeast Water Coalition, we have, uh, Councilwoman Avalos, uh, the representative, and Barron, the alternate.
Um, I would like to keep that one. They only meet every other month.
Yeah, they meet every other month. Okay.
You want, you're going to stay on that one?
Yes, I want to stay on that one.
And California Contract Cities, we have Barron and Hurtado.
I am, I'm, I'm fine with that, uh, schedule. So if, but if Hurtado-
I'm fine with that too.
Okay.
Okay, and School Safety Collaborative. I'm always the representative there, but I will, uh, change Rios as the alternate. And the Southeast Community Development Corporation, we have, uh, Rios.
That's the one we're gonna-
That's the one we're gonna look into.
I'm trying to send you to the one that it's, or is not a part of it. Okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve. Uh, anyone in the audience would like to speak on these items?
Line up.
Okay, Bean, Bean, do we have any, uh, emails?
No emails, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item number 14, which is warrants. City attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like to go ahead and open it up to any member here in the audience who have any questions regarding our warrant register. Now, we do have two, just would like to make the explanation. Uh, we have the one for the December 24th warrant register, which is, uh, was held for a lot prior, uh, year. And then we also have, uh, 14B, which is for the, uh, warrant register for this meeting as of, uh, today.
Vice Mayor, if I can open it, uh, if I can read it for the record?
Oh, if you must.
Uh, item 14A, the city council will consider approving the warrant register for December 24th, 2024. The grand total is $4,131,844.30. Cancellations are 108177, 108259. Uh, 14B is warrant registered for January 14th, 2025. The city council will consider approving the warrant register for January 14th, 2025. Grand total is $1,388,875.24. There are no cancellations there.
Thank you. Uh, again, so I'll open up here to any member in the audience. Seeing none. Uh, do we have any emails?
No emails.
No emails. Uh, what are the wishes of council?
Move, approve.
Got a motion in a second?
Second from, uh, Councilmember Giro Hurtado. Motion by, uh, Councilwoman Avalos.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to, um, adjournment. But before we adjourn, um, it was bad of me that I did not wish everyone, um, a Happy New Year. But I just want to, uh, you know, take this time and thank all of you, uh, for coming back this, this year. And, um, it looks very prospective, so we need to work together in order to get our city forward.
Madam Mayor?
And I do, give me a second.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and I just want to take this time to thank all of you, and, uh, hopefully that all your families are well. And, you know, just take care of each other. And, uh, in order for us to continue moving forward, we need to work together and, uh, let this year be a successful one. So, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought we were going to finish off some, or are we done for the back?
I thought we were.
We were done. We were done.
We're done, okay.
We're approved.
All right.
We were done.
Then I'm done.
So now, but you can stay.
I didn't see the arm wrestling.
So with that, we are adjourned. A motion? Can I give a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. So thank you, all of you.
Thank you.